People go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days. Thank you, Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of April 21st, 2020?
So moved. Dunaway.
Is there a second?
Second, Days.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The April 21st, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this afternoon, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, item number one, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number three, Fifth District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number six, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, Second District.
Receive, file, contract in an amount not to exceed $1,589,465.85. Be awarded to Pace Construction Company, LLC, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended. An authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second, Days.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
For two, Sixth District.
Receive, file. The matter be referred to the county councilor for the preparation of the requested memorandum.
So ordered. Report of the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon, everyone. Last night, I was honored to get to highlight the amazing work of our healthcare providers who are on the front lines every day, putting their lives in danger to save the lives of others. The Rise Up for Heroes program is an opportunity to stop for a few moments to celebrate the invaluable work going on at our regional hospitals. We have some of the best healthcare systems in the country, and their response to this pandemic has been remarkable. Thank you to all of our healthcare workers for all that you do. This morning, I was in Ferguson for the opening of a COVID-19 testing site. The drive-through facility at 800 Chambers Road will offer free testing from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Tuesdays. They will also be there on Wednesdays and Thursdays. To make an appointment, call 735-0220. Thank you to the Dallas Cowboys running back Ezekiel Elliott and the Islamic Foundation of Greater St. Louis for working with the county to open this much-needed testing site. As the COVID-19 virus continues to take its toll on our community, we know that those impacted most are African-Americans and those with chronic medical problems. For too long, segments of our population have been left behind. We cannot let this be another one of those times. As the council considers action today to allow spending of the CARES Act grant, my administration will ensure that the spending is done in an equitable fashion with emphasis placed on addressing the needs of the vulnerable and underserved populations. Spending of these federal funds will be invested in addressing the public health, humanitarian, and economic crisis facing the county today as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. My administration has been working on several fronts to eliminate those inequities. Our Department of Public Health is working with a newly-formed Regional Response Team led by Jason Purnell, a professor at the Brown School at Washington University and Director of Health Equity Works. The response team includes more than 40 nonprofits, social service agencies, and governments. Our Health Department has a full-time outreach to long-term care centers and dialysis centers to link them to PPE and to testing. Our Human Services Department has obtained hotel space for unhoused residents and for those who cannot safely isolate from their families. And the department has converted the North County Recreation Center into a shelter for homeless so that they can reduce their risk of exposure to the virus and be connected to treatment if they become ill. It is unprecedented times, and we must move swiftly to address the virus that has taken the lives of 157 of our neighbors, coworkers, and loved ones. Nearly 3,000 St. Louis County residents have tested positive for COVID-19. Today, I announced that most of our county parks will reopen with restrictions. This is our first test in reopening our community. Our stay-at-home order remains in effect and will not be lifted. We will reevaluate in mid-May. St. Louis County represents nearly 40% of the cases statewide, and we need to see a significant drop in cases and hospitalizations. As we increase our contact tracing, we will be able to get a better sense of the number of people who have been exposed. Meanwhile, we will continue to aggressively purchase tests so we can get more tests to the people and the care that they need. Working together, we can help curb this virus, save lives, and help our residents meet their basic needs and revive our economy. Thank you, Lisa. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive. We will now move on to our public forum.
And we have 44 written public comments this evening, or this afternoon, pardon me. Our first.
Before you proceed, Madam Clerk, I do want to say that our rules technically allow for only three minutes of public forum. With 44 speakers, I know it will take more than one hour, but I also recognize that this is an important time in our community right now, and we have some big issues on our agenda this afternoon. Just as I shared with each council member over the phone over the past few days, you always have a chance to be heard so long as you operate with the highest levels of decorum and respect, and the public deserves the same opportunity. So before we get started, I do want to remind folks of our process for doing public forum during this time of virtual meetings. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. Email must contain your name and physical address. Email must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is the same allotment allowed per person during normal meetings. The administrative director or a designee will read the comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the journal. May proceed, Madam Clerk, with the first comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first public comments come from the Lafayette Area Mayor's Association. The Lafayette Area Mayor's Association represents the cities of Baldwin, Chesterfield, Clarkson Valley, Ellisville, Greeca, Manchester, Pacific, Town and Country, Wildwood, and Winchester, comprising more than 219,000 St. Louis County residents and 5,650 businesses. We support transparency, oversight, and public participation in the approval process of funds to be expended by St. Louis County in relation to the COVID-19 situation. We support the requests made by St. Louis County Councilman, the North County Mayor's, and 24 Connection that oversight be provided with respect to the $175 million which is expected to be received by St. Louis County from the federal government. A fundamental requirement of government is to have the approval for the expenditure of taxpayer funds by their representatives. Next public comments is from Rick Garcia, 6627 Ashbury Drive, Afton, Missouri. I have a very simple question. How does this council think they have the authority in my name and the name of tens of thousands of St. Louis County residents to hand over with no oversight to one man such a large federal grant to use as he and only he sees fit? We have a system of checks and balances that apparently four of you have forgotten or just ignored. I and many others can forgive forgotten, for it shows a form of stupidity. Yet ignoring a law shows contempt and self-privilege, which is completely unacceptable. We await your response for the record. William G. Bernda, 2735 Town Oaks Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I believe that too much power is held by the position of county executive. I believe it would be better if the council held some of this responsibility. I propose that if a county state of emergency or stay-at-home order longer than seven days, that any additional time after this should only be enacted if the county council approves with a simple majority. I think five-sevenths would be better. Thank you for your time. Kate Stratton, 10253 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri. I object to Dr. Page being the sole decision-maker on how to spend the CARES funding package of $173.5 million in federal aid. We should expect the same level of transparency from the executive Dr. Page that he demanded from Steve Stanger. Also, I want to see St. Louis County Parks, businesses, and health and wellness practices to be opened on the same timetable as Governor Parsons has outlined for the state of Missouri, May 4th, 2020. Our hospitals are not overwhelmed with coronavirus patients, and the curve has been flattened here in the St. Louis region, so much so that hospital workers are now being furloughed. There is really no reason to continue the lockdown of healthy citizens. Diane Unger, 26 Baxter Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri. To whom and all it may concern, in the spirit of transparency, enter my demand that a detailed accounting and list of the $175 million expenditure of the CARES funding be made available to every taxpayer in the county prior to disbursement of those funds. Each council member should have full access and decision-making availability to determine where those funds should be going. Keep in mind, we are supposed to be living in a democracy, not a state where one person, Sam Page, can make decisions for all of us when we, the taxpayers, literally pay his salary. Council members are supposed to be working for and representing us, not be given carte blanche to spend our money. Christine Lowery, 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Christina Lowery, and I live at 7186 Christopher Drive on the north side of the home that was purchased by the for-profit business named Montinito. As the council is aware, I disagree with the St. Louis County Council Office Lawyer's interpretation to allow Montinito to function as a group home. According to Montinito on their own website, they themselves state they are a residential treatment facility that provides high levels of medical and psychiatric care with 24-hour nursing care. Montinito has a staff of doctors, psychiatrists, nurses, dieticians, and therapists, to mention a few, onsite at all times. Not only do they have all the staff that makes up a medical treatment facility, they bill insurance companies as a medical treatment facility. Their medical staff are employed by Montinito. This is how they are able to bill as a medical treatment facility. With all due respect, this is not a group home. Group homes were established with the intent for individuals who were mentally and/or physically handicapped to live long-term in a residential home. This is not what happens with Montinito. Their client stay is between four to eight weeks, with another eight clients coming in as soon as the first aid are transitioned on to either a partial hospital facility or a outpatient facility owned by Montinito. As a resident of Oakville, I am requesting my elected officials to help stop this business going into a residential area.
Continuing constituent comments, Mark Montavani, 19 Doroma Road, Ladue, Missouri, 63124. St. Louis County Council members, I wish to encourage the members of the St. Louis County Council to be true to your duty as elected representatives and engage in preapproval of all expenditures. Undoubtedly, these are unprecedented times, and they demand quick and efficient action. Nevertheless, I implore you to not surrender your duties of oversight so that our county government remains accountable to the people of St. Louis County. Even in emergencies, ours is a representative government characterized by separation of powers and balance. That is the system our founders built and one in which we should remain true. Thoughtful review of proposed appropriations by the full county council is essential. The taxpayers of St. Louis County have learned from past experience that the best interests of the community are served by having an informed and engaged county council that holds the county executive accountable. One would have expected the current county executive of all people to appreciate the necessity of accountability and budgetary oversight as he formally opposed the abusive budget practices of his predecessor and supported the Charter Amendment that ended unauthorized spending. On all substantive matters, it is likely that there will be differences of opinions within the community and on the council. That is as it should be. Even in times of adversity, however, real leaders favor open discussion and civil discourse. They wisely recognize that their mission is best served by fostering an environment built on openness, collaboration, and compromise. The unilateral judgment of a county executive whose voice is that of a single unelected interim appointee must not be substituted for the will of the community. St. Louis Countyans have been through a lot by virtue of self-centered leadership over the last few years. It is so disappointing that once again, we find ourselves having to defend the rights of the community against the wishes of an executive. Hence, I urge the council membership to be true to its calling, to serve its mission, to retain its oversight, and to quote Atticus Finch, "In the name of God, to do your duty." Thank you for your consideration, and kindest regards to all. Mark Montavani. Sue Weaver, 417 Claymont Drive, Baldwin, Missouri, 63011. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council. As STL County receives our CARES federal aid, it is imperative that we have financial oversight into the spending that Dr. Page required, excuse me, oversight into the spending. Dr. Page required transparency from his predecessor. As such, we also demand the same. Obviously, Dr. Page has been caught red-handed in telling untruths on many occasions, and as constituents, most of us question his intentions, especially when Dr. Page threatens to hold up the flow of the money if he isn't allowed to make sole decisions. We, the people, also demand that our county parks be reopened for full usage. These are our parks funded by our tax dollars, and for those of us who can act responsibly, demand that we be allowed to use them. Lastly, businesses need to be fully reopened at the same timetable as outlined by Governor Parsons. Personally, I've been laid off from three part-time jobs, and my husband's business is beyond struggling. We need to reopen Missouri. Sincerely, Sue Weaver. Julius Steuer, 730 Cedar Feld Court, Town and Country, Missouri, 63017. Please reopen St. Louis County Parks and businesses on the same timetable outlined by Governor Parsons for the state of Missouri on May 4th, 2020. This can be done safely and with proper restrictions. Those who wish can still stay home. Please do not let Dr. Page have sole discretion over the CARES funding. Thank you. Following comments from Lynn LeBeau, Afton, Missouri. It's disingenuous not to mention phony and hypocritical to hear Democrats of the St. Louis County Council, including the county executive, now suddenly wanting to protect life, suddenly wanting to look out for the vulnerable among us, and suddenly wanting to protect the innocent from dying. These are the same four Democrat council members who loudly voted down a January resolution put forth by Councilman Mark Harder asking for a non-binding St. Louis County Council resolution to recognize the significance of the National March for Life by honoring the work of the pro-life community and their life-affirming mission of protecting the most vulnerable and innocent among us. Please recall that in loudly voting down Harder's resolution, Lisa Clancy is quoted in a January 29th St. Louis Post-Dispatch article as saying, "I could not support this resolution because I fundamentally disagree with the premises of that." And that's a right that I reserve, she said. So in January, Clancy disagreed with the fundamental premise of valuing and protecting innocent and vulnerable life. But now, suddenly, Lisa Clancy wants citizens in North County to believe that somehow Lisa Clancy has had a change of heart from January and that Clancy suddenly values the most vulnerable among us, especially those citizens in North County. To quote Maya Angelou, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." Lisa Clancy's sudden regard for the vulnerable citizens happens to coincide with a three-way August 4th Democrat primary race between Sam Page, Mark Montavani, and Jake Zimmerman. Imagine if this was not an election year. How much care would vulnerable citizens be shown by Ms. Clancy? By Sam Page. Remember, Lisa Clancy's brother, John Clancy, is Sam Page's campaign manager, so you can be assured that Sam Page and Lisa Clancy are on the same page in how they really view the vulnerable among us. Citizens are safer casting their August vote for either Montavani or Zimmerman. At least, Montavani and Zimmerman are not on record as fundamentally disagreeing with the premises of that, as Clancy said in January. Her statement sounds chillingly like Ebenezer Scrooge. If they would rather die, they had better do it and decrease the surplus population. Following comment from Ernie Tracus, Butler Hill Road, 63219. I am submitting my written statement this afternoon because recent attempts at dialogue and debate between and amongst members of the county council have been stifled and suppressed. Sadly, it now appears that the only way members of the minority party caucus can be assured that their views and positions on crucial and important issues will be heard is for us to submit written comments for reading during the public forum portion of the council meeting. I again urge my Democratic colleagues to not act upon or vote on Sub Bill 1 for Bill 104. To begin with, appropriating and authorizing the spending of $173.5 million without any attempt at oversight as to that spending while ceding our sworn duty under the Charter is simply wrong. Article 2, Section 108, Paragraph 2 reserves the council the exclusive authority to oversee, determine, and appropriate funds of payment of all debts and expenses of the county. This necessarily includes the duty to conduct comprehensive substantive review of all expenses of the county. Substantive review of all spending requests submitted by the executive branch, something that has not been done here. To cavalierly waive or fail to fulfill this obligation is a grave error. More importantly, I do not believe the council enjoys any ability to vote on the sub bill. Again, the Charter is clear and precise. Article 2, Section 130 specifically addresses emergency ordinances such as Sub Bill 1 to Bill 104. Pursuant to Section 130, once the council takes up and votes upon an emergency ordinance, which Sub Bill 1 to Bill 104 is, one of the three things is possible. The measure doesn't receive a majority of votes and thereby fails. It receives a simple four-to-three majority, in which case the ordinance takes effect 14 days following the vote, or it receives a supermajority, a 5-2 vote, in which case the ordinance goes into effect immediately. Last week, Sub Bill 1 to Bill 104 received a simple four-to-three majority vote. This means that the ordinance goes into effect on May 5th, 2020. No further action is required or, in fact, permitted under the Charter. A simple fact of the matter is that the council, should the council majority act on Sub Bill 1 of 104 today, it does so illegally in violation of the clear and express provisions of this Charter. Thank you.
Continuing with public comments from Bill Coolman, 12385 Worthington Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. With nothing else to do but to watch the politicians figure how to line their pockets with money that was meant to put our crippled country back on track, remember we have you in sight. Partisan politics with greed and revenge is what led the last supervisor to a vacation in the Wild West. The money in question this go-around was meant to put our struggling economy back on track. Help the small businesses get back on their feet. Buying votes is not helping anyone. This should, excuse me, this money should be spent without partisan politics. It is taxpayers' money meant to help the small business owners that have been hurt so bad. The majority party has a four-to-three majority. What are you afraid of? Keep your eyes on the August primary. There is no party line, and the last primary strange bedfellows came out of the closet. North County voters, remember. Where were these same folks for the last 50 years? All they have done is try to break up the African-American voting bloc. As the movie says, "Show me the money." Watch out for the guy that wants to help you out after he gets his. Comments from Suzanne Bias, 432 Briarwick Drive, Baldwin, Missouri. Please allow businesses to reopen in St. Louis County on the same timetable as outlined by Governor Parsons. The residents can be trusted to reopen businesses and stay safe. Cannot have health without wealth. If Walmart, Target, Lowe's, and Home Depot can be open, why can't small businesses? Also, it is imperative that the St. Louis County constituents have financial oversight and transparency regarding how the funds are spent from the CARES Act federal aid. Dr. Page required transparency from his predecessor. As such, we also demand the same. Thank you for your consideration. From Tom Hirsch, 3217 Tam Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri. Please reopen the St. Louis County Parks and businesses on the same timetable as Governor Parsons has outlined for the state of Missouri, May 4th, 2020. I object to Dr. Page being the sole decision-maker on spending the CARES funding package of $273.5 million in federal aid. Thank you. Brian Dos, 13506 Winston Trace Court, St. Louis, Missouri. I am confused. Why would there be a vote to grant no oversight over the COVID funds? That sounds ridiculous and sounds like Steve Stanger might have got out of prison. I guess power does reveal your true self, Sam Page. I am also confused as to why, if there is a vote on this topic, why Lisa Clancy would be allowed to vote. Her husband is the campaign manager for Sam Page. My hope is that she accuses herself. Can someone please explain this? Finally, our small community was able to beat Steve Stanger and bear construction in court when they tried sneaking a development into our neighborhood. We have the voice of 2,000 voters strong. I would encourage the county executive to open St. Louis County in accordance with the state. We have 2,000 voters that are watching. From Kurt Whitzel, 3116 South Ridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri. Madam Chair Clancy, I won't be surprised if you unilaterally adjourn this public forum tonight while my letter is being read because you think you have the power to do so, and you simply do not agree with all my comments. Over the past several months, your actions while running the council, meeting as chair, violate all good government practices I am aware of. I am confident that Henry Roberts, the author of Robert's Rules of Order, is literally spinning in his grave after watching your heavy-handed actions as council chair during the last three meetings. Having chaired meetings of charitable civic and publicly-elected boards over the last 30 years, I was shocked when you ignored, after recognizing Councilman Harder, his properly-voiced motion for a committee of the whole meeting two weeks ago. Then you failed to call out the motion to adjourn as out of order. Can't have two motions on the floor at the same time. You then dismissed the entire Harder motion after it was seconded by Councilman Fitch and took no action on it as you dictatorially announced that you were adjourning the meeting. Did you ever receive any training to conduct a public meeting? Apparently not. And not allowing any council discussion on a motion to spend $170 million of taxpayer money because you don't like what was going to be said? Where is that? We must be tolerant of others' opinions you are constantly harping about. The county council meetings are not a Clancy-Page performance. It is a public meeting where the other duly-elected council people are to be given time to ask questions and express their concerns and provide rational justification for voting as they do. The public wants to hear them tell us what they believe on county-- The public wants to hear them tell us what they believe on county issues and why they vote as they do, and the council meeting should be the place where they can voice their opinions and represent their district voters. I would recommend you turning over the gavel to someone like Councilwoman Days, who has previously served in a legislative body and who knows how to conduct herself as the chair of a governmental body until you properly learn how to run a meeting. Thank you."
Following a comment from Mary Hirsch, 3217 Tam Avenue, 63139. "Please reopen the St. Louis County parks and businesses on the same timetable as Governor Parsons has outlined for the state of Missouri on May 4, 2020. I object to Dr. Page being the sole decision-maker on spending the CARES funding package of the $273.5 million in federal aid. Thank you." Christine Schultes, 221 Whiting Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri. "Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council. I'm writing to encourage you to open St. Louis County businesses on the May 4 as Governor Parsons has suggested. Irreparable damage is being done every day to businesses and our community during this closure. Yesterday, yesterday I read that SSM Healthcare will be furloughing 2,000 people because they are not seeing enough patients. Today, I read, read that Missouri lawmakers have to pare 700 million from their budgets, not to mention the ever-increasing layoffs currently taking place. Missouri's outbreak has been very small considering what's going on in other more highly populated regions in this country. How about opening the parks? The risk is minimal outdoors when social distancing. I would be remiss in not mentioning the devastating news that you plan to spend $173.5 million in federal aid without full council approval. A variety of opinions is necessary to make sure that you are representing the interests of everyone in your constituency. Checks and balances are needed to be sure money is being spent wisely. It seems to me the whole amount may need to, it seems to me the whole amount may need to go towards unemployment. Bottom line, there is not a vaccine and businesses need to reopen to stay afloat. You must trust the people of Missouri and the business owners to adjust as they see fit. People at risk will shelter in place without government mandates. The curve for the virus is not growing exponentially. The hospitals are not overwhelmed. The risk of getting the virus will continue no matter when you decide to lift the state on orders. There is no time like the present. Sincerely, Christine Schultes." Next comment is from Jeff Lowry at 7186 Christopher Drive in Oakville. "I'm writing you again today in reference to the residential property at 7190 Christopher Drive. As I continue to do more research on Montenegro, I continue to find more and more facts that this is not a group home as stated, but rather a treatment center that is indeed a business. They are owned by Levine Leekman Capital Partners, which is an independent investment management firm. On their website, they describe Montenegro as the following. "Montenegro is a leading provider of treatment of people suffering from eating disorders. The company operates facilities nationwide and offers a continuum of, of care encompassing residential treatment, partial hospitalization, intensive outpatient, transitional care, and meal support services. The company is renowned for its superior industrial, industry-leading clinical outcomes, the quality of its staff, and its individualized approach. I would like to point out that twice in this little description of themselves, they use the word 'company' to describe Montenegro. I will keep this letter shorter than previous letters as the theme has been repeated a couple of times already. This is nothing more than a business that is trying to open in a residential neighborhood. I fear for the entire county and the precedent that would be set in allowing this to happen. They call it a group home, but it is a business, plain and simple. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jeffrey S. Lowry." Following a comment from Charlotte Lewis, 1526 Thorn Ridge Court, Ballin, Missouri, 63021. "We should expect the same level of transparency from county executive Dr. Page as he demanded from Steve Stanger. We want the county parks open and the businesses open on the same timetable outlined by Governor Parsons for the state of Missouri on May 4, 2020. Thank you, Charlotte Lewis." Next comment from Matthew Chellus, 5435 Dantonair Place, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. "St. Louis County Charter states all legislative power shall be vested in the council. Appropriating funds is the single most, excuse me, appropriating funds is the most significant legislative power the county council or any legislative body has. The county council cannot surrender authority it has been granted by the charter. Not only can you not surrender it, you have a duty to retain it. Section 2.180 of the county car, county charter states in part, pursuant to and in conformity with the Constitution of Missouri and without limiting the generality of the powers of the council vested in this charter, the council shall have, by ordinance, the power to appropriate money for the payment of debts, expenses of the county for any public purpose, adopt an annual budget in accordance with the terms of this charter. This confirms to the general legislative power granted to the county council. It is not a power you can transfer to the county executive." Matthew Chellus.
Public comments from Keith Blaylock, 10249 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri. "We object to Dr. Page or any other single individual being the sole decision-maker on how to spend the CARES funding package and federal aid. We expect the same level of transparency from county executive that was demanded of previous executives. Also, as local citizens, we expect St. Louis parks and businesses to re, to open up on same timetable as Governor Parsons outlined for the state of Missouri on May 4. Our businesses and citizens are able to follow CDC guidelines but also make a living and earn money to support our families. Sincerely, Keith and Cindy Blaylock." From Kim Elias, 51 Portland Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. "I would like my concerns documented about Dr. Page being the sole decision-maker on how to spend the CARES funding package of $173.5 million in federal aid. We should expect the same level of transparency from county executive Dr. Page that he demanded from Steve Stanger. If Dr. Page is seeking counsel from a group of advisors, the citizens of St. Louis County deserve to know who they are. Are they stakeholders, political advisors? I am requesting that St. Louis County parks, small businesses, restaurants, churches, and medical therapy practices be reopened, subject to social distancing policies, beginning May 4, 2020, in compliance with the Declaration of Governor Parsons of the state of Missouri. If I can wait in line at Walmart, I can wait in line anywhere. It is a tragedy what is happening to the hard-working people of St. Louis. The consequences of this prolonged indefinite lockdown is devastating for people's mental health, physical health, and economic state of well-being. Thank you for taking the citizens' concerns into account as you make decisions." From Brandon Rathgaber and Julie Rathgaber, 2503 Brush Creek Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. "We live catty-corner from 7190 Christopher Drive. We are writing to express our concern over the sale of 7190 and its intended use. The property was sold to Montenegro, a for-profit corporation that runs in-treatment patient centers across the country. As a family who homeschools four children, all under the age of nine, we spend a lot of our days engaged in outdoor learning activities. We are able to provide our children with these healthy outdoor experiences because we've taken the time to build friendships with our neighbors. Without knowing our neighbors, we wouldn't feel safe allowing our children to explore in the manner in which they do. If 7190 becomes an in-treatment facility, staff members and service providers would be coming in and out on a daily basis. In addition, there would also be a turnover of clients every few months, along with their visitors. With this property potentially becoming such a high-traffic area, our greatest concern is that it will jeopardize the safety of all the children within our neighborhood. With that said, we strongly feel our residential community is not a proper location for such a facility. Thank you for your time." From Judy Clark, 7204 Christopher, St. Louis, Missouri. "Make it stop. This is a proposed site for an inpatient care facility, not a group home. $30,000 per month to reside here. The minimum space requirement for a new business of this type is three acres. This site does not even have half of this requirement. This is a business, not a residence. Our two-lane road will not support the traffic this business will generate. Their permit for 31 parking spaces is the equivalent of dropping 15 new homes on this tiny spot. Most of the homes on our street have two people per home. This is not appropriate. Thank you for listening. I hope someone can address this horrendous situation." From Paula Coughlin, 14 Grenada Way, Ladoo, Missouri. "With this letter, I call for you to follow the lead of Governor Parsons and reopen St. Louis County on May 4, 2020. Stores, pharmacies, gas stations, and other businesses deemed essential can be opened safely and not cause a spike in our COVID-19 numbers. So can all businesses, parks, libraries, and churches. Our businesses will do what is necessary to keep customers safe because that is the only way they will have any customers at all. We know how to social distance, and we will all do it even without an order from government. We are adults. We are responsible. Please stop treating the citizens of St. Louis County like ignorant children. Secondly, I call for you to open up the healthcare system before it crumbles completely and conserve no one at all. Closing our hospitals, clinics, and doctors' offices to everything except the single focus of COVID-19 has caused more deaths than this virus ever will. Children are not getting their routine vaccines, mammograms, and pelvic exams are not being performed, cancer screenings have stopped, suffering people cannot see their doctors for hyp lip pressure concerns, and so much more. All this while hospital beds are empty and doctors, nurses, and staff are being furloughed because they have no patients to treat, adding more people to our unemployment total. Mercy Hospital laid off 2,000 healthcare workers yesterday. How are we laying off healthcare workers during a pandemic? It is nonsensical. Lastly, with respect to the matter you plan to vote on today, I strongly oppose any plan to spend the federal CARES package of $173.5 million that does not involve the full vote of the county council. Mr. Page, you stated publicly in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch that obtaining approval for your spending from the council would be burdensome and would cause delays. This claim is dishonest. You meet with the council every Tuesday. Propose your spending proposals on the record and hold a vote for them on the record every week if necessary. This is transparency by definition, and it is the intended role of the council. Reporting your spending after you have spent it is not transparency. I ask that the council reject this proposal, enforce an on-the-record discussion, and vote for all spending related to the federal CARES fund."
Following comments from George L. Rugg, 911 Forder Glen Court, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. "Dear council members, I would like to begin by saying anybody that has been associated with the purchase agreement of this corporation, Montenegro, to purchase 7190 Christopher Drive should be ashamed of themselves. Our community is just learning about this now. Just heard our St. Louis Planning Department has known about it since last summer. Montenegro is owned by a multi-billion dollar corporation. When you contact them, people state they are not required to give an advance community notice, divulge their intentions. It is a group home for eating disorders and disabled. I can just imagine what kind of incentives could have been talked about. I strongly encourage all of you to must-read the following links, montenegro.com/montenito kills.com. Section later in my letter on Shady Development, almost 100% is referenced from the Montenegro Kills link. One, Montenegro is a residential-based programming for eating disorders. I'm not unsympathetic to treatment or those seeking it. I'm a cancer survivor and went through a very aggressive year-long treatment program, but there are appropriate places for this to be done. I've used physical therapy, treatment, and programs over the years, but there are appropriate places for this to be done. I have an issue with the location. A for-profit corporation does not belong in a residential neighborhood. This company has a track record of targeting unincorporated areas in states with laws with room for interpretation. I am concerned for the turnover in clientele and the increase in traffic with large staff, visitors, and business vendors. A commercial business has no place in a residential area. It will lower residential property values. It is my understanding this is owned as non-urban use. A county ordinance allows a group home to operate a single-family residence. Must be eight or fewer people and no limit on the number of staff." And Madam Chair, this was cut off because it was over the 400-word limit. The next comment is from Martha Duchold at 9158 General Grant Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123. "To the council members, first, 'do no harm' is a phrase typically associated with the healthcare field. But after reading St. Louis County resident Tom Sullivan's alarming April 27, 2020 memo to the St. Louis County Council regarding votes on the $173.5 million in federal funds, I am concerned that this phrase applies first and foremost to county government. Through its contorted interpretations and misapplications of the county charter, the county executive with the endorsement of the county chairwoman is pursuing unlimited authority to spend those funds without proper legislative oversight. While one can appreciate the well-meaning people stepping up to head up the commission that disperses these funds, what matters more to the health of our county is the respect for the authority of the St. Louis County Charter. Once that authority is misinterpreted or worse still, ignored, any act achieved through those means is necessarily undermined by the failure to adhere to the charter. I respectfully ask the county chairwoman, first, do no harm to our charter. Uphold your oath and adhere to the provisions of the charter. Not as you or the county executive wish them to be interpreted, but as they are plainly written. Thank you, Martha Duchold." Next comment is from F. Ronald Baum, 14311 Cross Timbers Court, Town and Country, Missouri, 63017. "Honorable Dr. Page and St. Louis County Council members, I am requesting that you open up St. Louis County for normal business on May 4, 2020, according to Governor Parsons' recommendations. I need a shoulder replacement. My granddaughter needs a knee surgery, both of which were scheduled months ago and were canceled due to COVID-19. My wife needs a knee replacement. The hold on these surgeries are creating increased pain, exacerbating the injury and creating body imbalances and injury to other joints. If held off too long, the surgeries will..." We need, we need to open up for the health of our citizens. Next comment is from Tom Disloge, 2 Fair Lake Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. "Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council. While I respect your desire to see a drop in the number of COVID-19 patients before reopening parts of the county, I am concerned that you are going to, excuse me, going to run into a much bigger problem if businesses stay closed much longer. With the number of folks that are currently unemployed or have had to shutter their businesses/ layoff people, their livelihoods are being destroyed before their very eyes. This is going to generate significant mental health issues, crime, suicide, drug use, et cetera. Those issues are going to overwhelm healthcare facilities in a way that COVID-19 never will. Please reopen the county. At the end of the day, nobody wants to walk into a business that is not safe. If we don't feel that a particular business is not taking common sense steps to protect us, we won't patronize that business. At least let us make that choice and allow individuals to provide for their families by opening businesses. Please, thank you for your time and consideration." Next comment from Mary Jo Von 4311 Cross Timbers Court, Town and Country, Missouri, 63017. "Honorable Dr. Page, honorable doctor, excuse me, honorable county council members, please reopen the county parks and businesses on May 4. Many businesses are failing and are more rapidly following, will never recover. This destroys the owners, employees, and their families. As a consequence, welfare rises with loss of self-esteem, depression, increased domestic violence, alcohol, cigarette, and drug use. Stress in families lead to broken homes, school dropout, and crime. Let the vulnerable citizens choose to isolate at home. They can avoid family members that go out. The parks and playgrounds are necessary for good health mentally, physically, and emotionally. We can be responsible for distancing ourselves if we choose to continue voluntarily."
From the city of Vanita Park, 8374 Midland Boulevard, Vanita Park, Missouri. "The North St. Louis County mayors and the mayors of the 24-to-1 municipalities support transparency, oversight, and public participation in the approval process of funds to be expended by St. Louis County." funds to be expended by St. Louis County in relation to the COVID nineteen situation. We support the requests made by the St. Louis County Councilman, the North County mayors, and twenty-four to one that oversight be provided with respect to the one hundred and seventy-five million dollars which is expected to be received by St. Louis County from the federal government. A fundamental requirement of government and the ordinance of St. Louis County is to have the approval of the county council for the expenditure of taxpayer funds. From Sandy Dum earth, nine sixty-one Plateau Drive, Fenton, Missouri. I object to Dr. Page being the sole decision-maker or how to spend the CARES funding package of one hundred and seventy-three point five million dollars in federal aid. There should be transparency on this issue. I also want St. Louis County parks and businesses open on the same timetable and same guidelines as Governor Parsons has outlined for the state of Missouri, May fourth, twenty twenty. From Jake Zimmerman, thirteen Arbor Road, Olivet, Missouri. A week ago, there were six weeks until our next election. I wrote to the election board urging action to protect both the health of our voters and the integrity of the election. Tonight, there are five weeks until the next election. I've heard no response and nothing has been done. I tonight urge the county executive and council to join in the fight for voting rights while there is still time. At a minimum, I would like the board to do the following. Proactively mail absentee ballot applications to every registered voter prior to each twenty-twenty election day, allowing sufficient time to return the application by mail, receive a ballot by mail, and vote by mail. Waive the requirement for notarization by declaring that voting absentee due to concerns about possible coronavirus exposure is consistent with being prevented from voting in person by incapacity or confinement due to illness. In ordinary times, these actions would not be necessary to protect voting rights. These are not ordinary times. Businesses usual at the polls in a pandemic can expose voters to a potentially deadly virus as the price of casting a vote. That is not a price any St. Louis County voter should ever have to pay. The election board took a positive step in this area by proactively mailing out absentee ballot applications for voters in COVID nineteen high-risk categories. However, we must do more. We must safeguard the right to vote safely for every St. Louis County voter. We cannot afford to wait for the courts or state officials to act. We must act now. I urge you to join in my call to the election board. I also ask that as the council addresses the budgetary challenges posed by our coronavirus recovery, you remain mindful of the need to provide funding to assure fair and accessible elections in these extraordinary times. From Terri Deluge, two Fair Lake Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. I am the mother of a child that is diagnosed with autism, cerebral palsy, and epilepsy. While I don't expect you to understand, I expect you to listen. I have been asking you to open the county with safe distancing practices. I drove in peaceful parade protests last week. Did you see over two hundred people in Clayton requesting the same thing? We not only need our parks open, we need to take our children to therapy. Do you know there are over twenty-five thousand children with developmental delays in St. Louis County? We need our physical, occupational, speech, and behavioral therapists. You and your council are denying us access to our needed resources for our children's health and well-being. Please do not continue to ignore our needs as we are not going to stop advocating for our children. In addition, I read in the Post an article that mentioned the surrender of relief oversight is not normal. I do not believe it is legal. Could you please reference in your meeting today where in the St. Louis County Charter it allows for the county executive to be the sole decision-maker in deciding appropriation of funds? I will be listening, and I am sure you know the contents of the county charter. From Sherry Ferry, six Fair Lake Drive, Clarkson Valley, Missouri. I'm writing to request that you open parks and small businesses in St. Louis County on the same timetable as Governor Parsons. We know too many small business owners who are suffering and ready to work in a safe manner.
Only comments from Tom Sullivan, seven fifty-one Syracuse University City, Missouri, six three one three zero. Madam Chair and members of the council, hopefully today's council meeting will not be another embarrassment for the citizens of St. Louis County. As I have made clear, the substitute bill number one for bill one oh four violates the county charter as it transfers legislative power to the county executive. The power of the county charter gives solely to the county council. You are also violating the county charter by the method in which you are approving the legislation. Council is only to address an emergency ordinance once. There is no perfection or final approval. So bill number one for bill one oh four was approved last week's meeting with a majority of four. According to the charter, it is then enacted and goes into effect after fifteen days. County Executive Sam Page says he needs unchecked authority because the council acts at a leisurely pace. Yet the council, yet the way the council is now set up, it can provide approval right now, but only for real emergencies. The county executive is the one operating at a leisurely pace. You may recall the first coronavirus case where a student returning to St. Louis from Italy tested positive. Her sister and father went to a father-daughter dance, and this was criticized by the county executive at a press conference. That took place the first week of March. It is now the last week of April, and Mr. Page is talking about needing to move fast by personal protection equipment. Perhaps the county executive might get in touch with former Governor Eric Greitens, who has been giving away thousands of face masks across Missouri for the last month. Just yesterday, the former governor gave one fifty N ninety-five masks and a hundred thousand surgical masks to the Columbia, Missouri Fire Department. Also, the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services announced yesterday it now has the capacity to do fifty thousand coronavirus tests a week. This is by using state labs and a network of commercial labs around the state. Presumably, St. Louis County can take advantage of the state's increased capacity. Thank you for listening to my comments. Following comments from Tim Fitch, nineteen oh three Lance End, St. Louis County. It is a sad state of affairs when an elected councilman has to submit written comments as a member of the public in order to speak. The chairwoman did call this morning saying she would allow us to speak today before our vote on bill one oh four. How refreshing. Tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary of the indictment and resignation of Steve Stinger. For the past year, we've heard Sam Page constantly talk about his administration being focused on transparency. Sam said it wouldn't be politics as usual. Sam said he would value input from all council members. Sam said he would communicate regularly with the council. Sam and I spoke, last spoke on February tenth, and it was for him to tell me to stop speaking to the public through the media. Person's true character is often revealed in times of crisis. Sam has a tough primary ahead of him in August, and he wants sole control over one hundred and seventy-three million of your tax dollars. Trust him, nothing to see here. The Department of Public Health has two acting co-directors. They are the public health experts. How many times have you seen them in public providing a briefing during this crisis? Zero. Instead, you get Sam Page every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. It's much cheaper than buying campaign ads on TV. Why did Sam have Kelly Dunaway speak at last Friday's press briefing and at today's parks announcement? Could it be she also needs free media exposure because of a tough primary ahead of her? This is COVID nineteen politics at play. What else may be suspect in Sam's response to this pandemic? Closing our parks? Ongoing shutdown of our churches and businesses? Trust him, nothing to see here. Sam Page has appointed a campaign contributor, Cindy Brinkley, to oversee the spending of these federal funds. Sam has hired Lisa Clancy's brother to run his campaign. Trust him, nothing to see here. Now Sam Page wants you to trust him with this money. Nothing to see here. Experts have said it's improper to give Sam Page... Sam, only you, your council friends, and your political advisors believe it's a good idea to have no meaningful council oversight. Trust the experts, you say. We're right back to where we started a year ago. The more things change, the more they stay the same. Comments from Mark Harder, forty-one South Central, Clayton, Missouri, six three one oh five. Dear Council, dear Chairwoman Clancy, it is an unusual precedent for a sitting councilman to have to submit comments to the council during a public forum, but this seems to be the only way a minority party member of this council can have his opinions heard during a meeting without being cut off. Recently, healthy debate has taken a backseat to the majority's agenda. When you became chairwoman in January, we on the minority side of the dais were hoping you would be fair and work with all the council persons on important and meaningful legislation that will move St. Louis County forward. That's why we voted for you. In my opinion, that has not happened, and in some cases, we are moving backward. As the senior member of this council, I have lived through four different chairpersons with varying styles of leadership. During that time, we removed a corrupt county executive, cut budgets, and created programs to help all citizens, all in a bipartisan way. We also had productive committees chaired by Republicans. Was it easy? No, but we worked together, and our opinions were heard and valued. That collaborative approach is absolutely lacking on the council today. For example, two weeks ago, during end-of-the-meeting discussion, you failed to recognize my motion that was seconded to have a committee of the whole to... Number one oh three and one oh four. That motion was disregarded, and you called for a hasty adjournment to squelch any debate. This demonstrated total ignorance of the rules of order at a quorum and was a black eye on the ideals and practices of basic democracy and council leadership. The media took notice. Being a councilperson is a hard job, and being a councilperson... A chairperson is even harder. So you need to put in the time to know the rules and how to deal with people who might have a different opinion. Understand the bills and the issues, but most importantly, know the consequences of those bills and work across the aisle to achieve good things. Rubber-stamp governance does not work anymore, no matter which party you favor. Collaboration does work. If you are overwhelmed by your role as chairperson, just say so. It is important to understand there may be other views on this council other than your own. There are a few of us who have valuable institutional knowledge and legislative experience to move this county forward if given the opportunity to share. Other comments from Chris Struckoff, ten four four eight Gregory Court, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one two eight. For section two one eighty of the county charter, the council shall have by ordinance the power to appropriate money for the payment of debts and expenses of the county for any public purpose, adopt an annual budget in accordance with the terms of this charter. The four Democrat councilwomen decided to forego their responsibility. Over to the Democrat county executive Sam Page to use as he desires. As stated in the Post-Dispatch, this is not normal, and they questioned if it is legal. So do I. Shame on U. County Council Chair Lisa Clancy and the three other Democrat council members who voted with her to shirk their duty. Shame on the county executive for participating in this sham. It appears we have replaced ex-county executive Steve Stinger with another crook. Next comments are from Barry Glance, Creve Court, Missouri. Good afternoon. My name is Barry Glance. I live at number six, Chardou Lane, with my wife Sherry. We have three adult children, all who live in St. Louis as well. I'm currently in my third term as mayor of Creve Court. Before being elected mayor, I served for nine years on our planning and zoning commission and four terms on the Creve Court City Council prior to that. I'm currently a member of the St. Louis County Building Commission and a past board member of the East-West Gateway Council of Governments. I'm also a past president of the Municipal League of Metro of St. Louis. Full disclosure, I'm also a candidate for the Second District County Council. We are in the throes of a worldwide pandemic that is taking our citizens' lives, endangering the health of our people, tearing at our families, challenging our economy at its core, and stretching the resources of all levels of government, the healthcare system, and our safety net. As a current municipal executive, I implore you to vote no on bill one oh four, which would undermine the fundamental basis of our governance when we are the most vulnerable. A government's priorities and policies are reflected in every expenditure of taxpayer dollars. Bill one oh four, if passed, would allow the county executive to spend one hundred and seventy-three million of Federal CARES Act without any legal oversight by the seven elected members of the county council and out of the view of the public. Not only would this be handing over spending authority, but would also be the council relinquishing its legislative authority over public safety, healthcare, inequality, and the economic policies implemented to respond to this crisis. Policies that will fundamentally chart the future course of St. Louis County for decades to come. The county council is the legislative body which should collaborate in order to make decisions that are in the best interests of their constituency and the county as a whole. An emergent situation should be no exception when it comes to honoring the system of checks and balances that are put in place for every governmental entity, including this one. No single person, or even a select three, should have the authority to disperse funds or enter into contracts without the input and the rest of their elected peers. Madam Chair, that concludes the public comments. This last comment was cut off because it exceeded the four hundred word limit.
From Richard and Diane Clark, sixteen eighty-eight Frontenac Woods Lane, Frontenac, Missouri. We object to Dr. Page being the sole decision-maker on how to spend the CARES funding package of one hundred and seventy-three point five million in federal aid. We expect the same level of transparency from county executive Dr. Page that he demanded from Steve Stanger, and we have learned what corruption means. Also, you must... In line with the rest of Missouri under, as Governor Parsons is directing. At this point, the cure is causing more harm than the disease. All we need is direction to be careful, anyone sick staying home, and anyone at risk to be extra diligent. Comments from Kathy Ellis, seventy-one forty Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. We heard that the Montinito Corporation was able to sneak in the purchase of seventy-one ninety Christopher Drive by saying they are a group home. They are not a group home and should not be allowed to pretend they are. Anyone would welcome a true group home where residents live together long-term to support each other and take care of the home like a family. If you look into Montinito's business, they are temporary, excuse me, they are a temporary medical treatment facility that treats patients on a rotating basis, charging thirty-three thousand dollars a month for each patient, and has a full rotating staff in chefs, directors, cleaning services, doctors, clinicians, trainers, landscapers, delivery services, et cetera. They are owned by a multi-billion dollar corporation who only cares about their profits. This is very wrong, and now they've applied for an additional parking lot by calling themselves an adult daycare facility? Before, they were calling themselves a group home for adolescents with eating disorders. They cannot be two different things, especially when they are neither of these. This parking lot would take up most of the front lawn, leaving very little green space. And why would a group home for eight need nineteen parking spots when most patients are dropped off for their one-to-two-month stay? Please look on Glassdoor dot com, which is a highly rated company where employees post honest comments. Montinito Corporation has a very bad score, and comments include very high turnover rate, employees are overworked and not valued at all, not enough parking, low quality of treatment, low success equals low success rate, and staff is undertrained and patients are mistreated. These are a few of hundreds of negative comments about Montinito Corporation. Montinito took advantage of whoever approved this by misrepresenting the type of business they are. Please make this right. There is also a very concerning safety factor about this residential space. It sits on an extremely steep, approximately one hundred and fifty-foot drop rocky cliff. Please see attached photos of partial views of the deadly cliff. This extreme drop-off spans across the whole backyard as well as several homes to either side, and is just steps from the house. And from personal experience, a fence does not stop anyone who is curious to look over. Please reconsider the oversight that this for-profit business is a group home. We support the help and care for patients who need it, and there is plenty of acreage on Telegraph Road where this business would better handle the traffic and parking and be safer by not being on a deadly cliff. From Stacy Washington, sixteen one sixty-seven Lamp and Lantern Village, Chesterfield, Missouri. Please open St. Louis County businesses on the schedule outlined by Governor Parsons. Louis County businesses on the schedule outlined by Governor Parsons. They're only re, not so political, and that should be beneath you as elected officials. It is worth noting that all of you will be paid regardless of whether you permit businesses in St. Louis County to reopen. If you decide to keep the county closed indefinitely, you should forego your salaries indefinitely as well. Transparency is not allowing Dr. Page to oversee the funds from the federal government. It is a dereliction of duty on the part of the council. You are elected to appropriate funds, not give that authority over to one person. And our final comments this afternoon come from Hannah Mungamari, ninety-one oh eight Pennant, St. Louis, Missouri. Americans honor Dr. Uma Rani Madhuzad Hana, who graduated from India Mysore College for her medical services, while Indians in USA who harp on white supremacy allowed Hindu extremists to burn Reverend Reverend Graham Stanisand, his eight-year, ten-year sons alive until they were killed in nineteen ninety-nine, January in Orissa. Even Horton couldn't hear who or whose Indian official say an iota of truth about the most unhygienic practices in China, India, illegal immigration caravans. All the UN said was to be kind to refugees. Now who is being kind to the families of Americans who died in thousands? Who? Who? Burning medical person and his little sons is a huge health hazard. Whose Indian officials never said. A word about that in nineteen ninety-nine, and today in twenty twenty, doctors treating COVID nineteen patients are being stoned in India. One doctor who died from COVID nineteen had to be buried hurriedly at midnight by his fellow doctors without his family quarantined since people in India were throwing stones at his funeral coffin in twenty twenty. Always harping about climate change. I think she's saying WHO nor the UN did much to stop the fatal culture change in the West to resemble the unhealthy culture traits of the East. The one healthy trait in Eastern culture, protect married women from being female victims of self, of sex trafficking using divorce, is not planted in USA, but the noise pollution of drums, diversion through sexually provocative dances, bikinis that take after saree showing the midsection, poisonous polygamy, idolatry, corruption, were planted firmly by skilled immigrant professionals to make the West as unhealthy as the East, so the poor would be at the mercy of the powerful who'd take poor people's little girls as third and fourth wife. Cast supremacists in India and concubine communists in China use polygamy and addiction to alcohol, smoking drugs to keep their populace as developing countries, to rob USA by flattering USA as a kind country, and backstab USA, mocking its white majority as blonde brains. In India, Westerner is derogative, is a derogative term in my mother tongue for real. American Dr. Sarah Kugler served Indians in early nineteen hundreds as the hospital built in her honor had been taken over by caste supremacists in Gunther, AP, India, and in Brentwood, Mount Calvary Lutheran Church land is being leased to non-Christian Brentwood City by hurting and falsely accusing the members of this eighty-eight-year-old congregation. Please have some strict scrutiny done to protect elderly, white widows, and longstanding members, preschool teachers in this majority white eighty-eight-year-old historic congregation which show no racism towards my black family for the past seventeen years. And Madam Chair, I had to cut off the comments at this point, which are at four hundred words. That is all the comments for today's meeting.
Thank you. That concludes public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number one oh eight, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for the use by St. Louis County of property for collection and temporary storage of household hazardous waste. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. We will proceed with perfection of bills.
Bill number twenty, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number five, introduced by councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to hold bill five.
Bill number five is held.
Number thirty-two, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Please hold bill number thirty-two.
Bill number thirty-two is held.
Bill number thirty-six, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold bill thirty-six.
Bill number thirty-six is held.
Bill number seventy-six, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold bill number seventy-six. Bill number seventy-six is held.
Bill number one oh five, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect bill one oh five.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one oh five is perfected.
Bill number one oh six, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect bill number one oh six.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one oh six is perfected.
Bill number one oh seven, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number one oh seven.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one oh seven is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number three twenty, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold number, bill number three twenty. Bill number three twenty will be held.
Substitute bill number two for bill number three eighty-five, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute bill number two for bill number three eighty-five.
Substitute bill number two for bill number three eighty-five is held.
Number fourteen, introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Bill number fourteen.
Fourteen is held.
Bill number ninety-nine, introduced by councilmember Daze and Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number ninety-nine.
Second, Dunaway. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number ninety-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill number ninety-nine is finally passed.
Bill number one hundred, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one hundred.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill number one hundred, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one hundred is finally passed.
Bill number one oh one, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one oh one.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill one oh one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one oh one is finally passed.
Bill number one oh two, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number one oh two.
Second, Daze.
I want to order, Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I note for the record that this bill, I believe, was introduced five months ago, and there's been little or no discussion, certainly no committee of the whole held in connection with the bill. It calls for the issuance of four and a half million dollars of bonds. I think it is, I would miss at this time to finally pass this bill without any further oversight and hearing regarding it, so I urge my colleagues to vote no on this measure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
I will vote no without a committee of the whole.
Madam Chair, on bill number one oh two, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill number one oh two is finally passed.
Bill number one oh three, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
This is our bill to purchase about over seven million dollars of supplies mostly related to testing. We did have a committee hearing of the Justice Health and Welfare Committee last week. I move for final passage of bill number one oh three.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Before our vote, I will note that I did offer a subbill on this last week, and it was shut down. It would added one point eight million dollars of PPE, protective mask for first responders and community members. However.
Fitch, if you would like to make a statement, you need to do that before we take our votes. This is out of order. Please make your vote.
I'm used to that. No.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill number one oh three, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number one oh three is finally passed.
Substitute bill number one for bill number one oh four, introduced by councilmembers Clancy, Daze, Dunaway, and Walton Gray.
As everyone is aware, this bill has been the subject of much scrutiny and conversation over the past couple of weeks. We did have a committee hearing last week through Councilwoman Gray's Justice Health and Welfare Committee where we had a discussion about this bill. I do move for final passage of substitute bill number one for bill number one oh four.
Second.
Before we take, excuse me, before we make a vote, I do, I am aware that there are several council members who would like to make a statement. Councilman Tracus, is that what you were inquiring about?
That is, that is correct.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fifty-eight years ago. Douglas MacArthur spoke to the Corps of Dead at West Point about duty, honor, country. I speak for this body today about duty, honor, county. Each of us has sworn an oath to implement the county charter as written. Passage of this bill today, in fact, what happened, is an affront to that oath, in fact, a derogation of it. From bill one to bill one oh four, in a minimum, needs no further action by this council. It was voted on last week, obtained a vote of four to three. As such, it goes into effect automatically. Any further action by this body violates the charter and is such as illegal. More importantly, or just as importantly, by ceding oversight and control over one hundred, I'm sorry, yes, one hundred and seventy-three and a half million dollars. We abrogate our sworn responsibilities to the residents of St. Louis County, exercise our authority as a legislative body over spending in this county. It's a mistake to do it, and I urge my colleagues to vote no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a statement before we take this vote?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a statement.
Councilwoman Dunaway.
In spite of the claims by my colleagues that they aren't allowed to speak at these meetings, I would like to remind everyone that one of the jobs of our chair is to enforce decorum, and based on the dictionary's definition of decorum as behavior in keeping with good taste and propriety, I don't think it's fair of them to blame the chairwoman for enforcing decorum and Roberts rules above their need to yell. Additionally, I know our chairwoman makes attempts off dais to talk to each of us, seek opinions, hear ideas, and work collaboratively, and yet we find ourselves working without many of our colleagues. I am really disappointed in this council because money meant to save lives is being used as political football. This council appropriates tens of millions of dollars each year in state and federal grants, all of which are accompanied by rules, restrictions, and regulations for how the money can be spent. In twenty nineteen, this council appropriated approximately sixty million dollars in such funds, and about six million in such funds since I joined the council last summer. In appropriating these grants, this council has never asked for oversight and transparency over and above the rules that come with the money. The CARES grant itself came with pages and pages of rules, regulations, and requirements about how this money can be spent, with the US Inspector General keeping close watch. That being said, this council takes its oversight rules seriously, which is why I will be chairing our special committee for oversight of COVID nineteen funding and expenditures, where I will work with Councilwomen Daze and Gray in consultation with the executive branch and the task force on COVID nineteen spending, to engage the public in a weekly meeting where we review past expenditures and debate upcoming expenses and changing priorities. Additionally, the transparency portal at STLcorona dot com offers real-time commitments and expenditures. To make any comparisons with the level of transparency within the current administration and the last one is disingenuous at best, hypocritical at worst. The reality is that we have been listening to the concerns of the public, our colleagues, and other community leaders, and we've jumped to action in order to find a way to offer transparency, oversight, and accountability in spending of the CARES grant without getting in the way of the emergency that requires quick response. We invited our Republican colleagues to join us in this added layer of oversight, and instead of participating with us to ensure that their constituents are heard, they have instead thumbed their noses at us. We are providing an unprecedented amount of transparency in the spending of these funds during an emergency unlike we have ever experienced in our lives. Comparing this situation to normal times and asking for a normal process that takes weeks is unconscionable, especially in light of the fact that our colleagues seem unmoved by the nature of this emergency, and that instead of coming together to pass funding requests as quickly as possible, they have taken the position of holding this up at every step and making sure it takes as long as possible. Though political posturing is expected in election seasons, my disappointment in this council is beyond any level of partisan gamesmanship I could have ever anticipated. In fact, I am especially disappointed in the councilman who sat down with me before I even took my seat on the dais, talking through his own challenges and dealing with politicians while the true statesmen and women are trying to do the work of the people. The way you councilmen are holding up funds we need to save lives and. The way you, councilmen, are holding up funds we need to save lives and yelling about demands for oversight while refusing to join our efforts to provide the oversight is worse than anything I ever thought you were warning me I'd experience in public office. The reality is that without this funding working its way to the front lines of this crisis, procuring the testing and tracing we need, supporting the immediate needs of vulnerable communities, we will not be able to lift our safety orders. Because I strongly believe in the leaders on the front lines to decide where the money should be spent, and this council's commitment to oversight of the spending, a commitment I take so seriously that I'm going part-time at my day job to focus on this oversight committee, I will be voting yes on Bill Number 104.
Would anyone else like to make a statement?
Council Chair. Council Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Thank you. Thank you for this time. I would also like to comment on Bill 104. I too have been very concerned over this, concerned about giving up the ability for this bipartisan council to overlook and give oversight to the money that is coming in from the federal government. I also want to change a few things that were said here just a few minutes ago. The oversight documents from the federal government are a whopping four pages of very vague regulations, so I don't see that to be a big stumbling block to go through and to make sure we give proper oversight when necessary. But sometimes it will be vague, and we won't know until we consult each other how much we want to commit to these different issues going forward. I also don't want to give up my sworn oath to give oversight of taxpayer money and the people that voted for us on various elections in the past. So I too will be voting no on this, and I would respect my colleagues to do the same because this is necessary, and if it was a year and a half ago, there'd be a unanimous vote for this at this time. So with that, I vote no.
Anyone else who would like to be heard? All right, let's take our vote.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 104, there are four ayes and three noes.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 104 is finally passed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have no resolutions this afternoon, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number one.
Appointment will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
The appointments and reapportment will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
The appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
And item number five.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, we have no prepared orders this afternoon.
Thank you. Before I call for a adjournment of this meeting, I want to say that I know that we took some big actions this afternoon, and it was tough, and it has been divisive. But I know that we're going to move forward, and all of us are committed to taking care of people in our community. We're going to be keeping an eye on this money. I disagree on this appropriation, but I think we all agree that we need to work together as we move forward, and it is my sincerest hope that this happens.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else like to say something before we adjourn? I will call for adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Dunaway.
For a second.
Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.